This is the July 13th, 2021 meeting of the Kushner Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda is the secretary's report from June 15th. Does anyone have any questions or questions for those minutes? Okay, your motion?
Motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Accepting it.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Next is the financial report. So you have two budgets to look at today. You have the final budget for FY '21. And you'll see that we ended the year, the fiscal year, at 98.7% spent out. We still had available funds totaling about $3,500, and those will be turned back over to the town. And then, you've also gotten today in FY '22, the first budget of the fiscal year, which you were only 13 days in. So there's not too much happening as of yet. In the salary portion, those deductions just represent three days of the new fiscal year, so we haven't had full pay period yet, but it'll be coming next week. And in terms of operating, you'll see we've had a couple of expenses in the Building and Grounds line, a couple in office supplies, and we're already going strong with that Materials line at 11% spent out. But pretty much, there's not too much to report this fiscal year, at least yet. Unless you have any questions on either of those. The FY '21, going back to that, didn't change all that much from when we met on June 15th until the end of the year. Not too much difference there. Anybody have any questions for the Spencer part? Okay, your motion?
Do we accept the budget report, sort of?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. New business, libraries, building and grounds? So new slash old business in some cases. But I wanted to give you a quick review of some things that are happening with the building. The air conditioning in the children's room was an issue at the tail end. I believe it was June 29th, we came into the building, and it was AC, but not strong AC. So the Air Masters, which is the company that is responsible for our HVAC, came in to do a review and found most of the system in error, and they were able to do some updates. The message we were getting was that the refrigerator was abnormal. So I guess they made it normal to the tune of $613. But it's working, and hopefully stays that way. I did pay that invoice through the gift account due to the timing. Like even though we have that overage in the appropriated budget for FY '21, it was too late to spend that money. We were too late to get approval to transfer from salary to operating. If we still had had money in the operating portion of the budget, I could have done that, but we didn't, so it was too late to request that. So I did pay for that through the gift account. Also, you might remember, we had some issues with some of the pipes in the basement, and that had been taken care of in early June. I was off for the two days in which that was being taken care of, and so I didn't realize that both Quickflow and Mr. Sesspool had been called in to help with that. I thought it was just taken care of by the TPW and the Building Department, but I got those invoices at the tail end of June. And again, because of the fact that it was so late in the fiscal year, we couldn't, it was too late to transfer funds. So again, I had to pay for that through the gift accounts, and the two together totaled $725. So we hadn't really spent much from the gift accounts all fiscal year, so we do have healthy money there that we don't have to go begging for money from elsewhere. At the very beginning of this fiscal year, our radio box for the fire alarm panel needed a new battery. I haven't gotten the invoice from that yet, but I hope to pay that through the Building and Grounds line of our appropriated FY '22 budget versus using gift account funds. And I also had mentioned to you that we had had that carpenter ant issue and the vestibule last summer. It appeared that we were going to have that same issue again, but our custodian seems to have gotten it under control just with some basic treatment, not with anything heavy duty. So I have not called the pest control company as of yet. I want to see how those... That did cost $375 when we had it done last year. So if we are to need that again, then I'm hoping that we can do that through Building and Grounds again, if it's needed. So those are the major, major things that happened. I wanted to mention, on a nice news note, our Friends group for the past, I believe it's four years, it could be five, but it's at least four years. They have paid for service from Mosquito Squad to spray the grounds for mosquitoes and ticks and us, given us some confidence with doing evening programming, which of course we didn't do much of last year, and we don't have anything set in stone yet for this year. But knowing that, the Friends still agreed to have the service taken care of for this year, which we appreciate the Friends being willing to do that. But the Friends got a nice surprise because Mosquito Squad sent back the canceled check for this year's service with a letter of support for the library and also congratulating us on reopening the library at full hours, which was pretty wonderful. So they are in a Kushner-based company, so I thought it was appropriate to just mention that here in this meeting and to thank Mosquito Squad for that generous donation, really, giving us the service for free this summer. And we are hopeful that, you know, maybe late August, early September, we can at least do a few concerts out on the back lawn to bring that series back, that's so popular pre-COVID. Maybe do a few family programs out back. And I'm hoping that the Friends would be willing to use the money that was turned back towards a program, and then we would be able to credit Mosquito Squad for that as well. So anyway, I thought that was important to mention. That was a really nice thing to see. And what else do I have? You may have noticed when you came in today, or if you drove by over the weekend when we had that big storm on Friday, the tree right out on the front, on the south side of the front lawn, suffered some more damage during that storm on Friday. And even when there's a minor storm, that tree suffers damage. So it's going to receive an inspection to confirm, but I think everyone who's looked at it feels pretty confident that the core is rotted and so that we're going to have to have that tree removed. And if it does come down, there's already a plan in place to replace it. Jim Merritt, who came to take a look on Friday, suggested even like a nice dogwood or, you know, something that would flower out front. But he's looking into that, and he's going to have it inspected before a final decision is made. But it's taken a beating over the past, I'd say, three years especially. But a big piece came down on Friday. And then, I hope to have a little bit more information on what's happening for the pavilion on the back lawn. I hope to have more info for that for today. Other than to say, we know that the funds were approved for that, so the town will be using CARES funding for that pavilion. The work should be beginning soon, and hopefully it will be available for us to use at some point in August. And it is going to be located in the northeast corner instead of the southeast, which is what we had talked about, I believe, in May when we met. But due to grading issues, it would be, the idea, my original idea was northeast corner. It was proposed to put it in southeast because of solar panels, but the grading, it would be, it's much flatter in the northeast corner, so it would be easier to do the work there. So it looks like that's where it's going to be. And hopefully, we'll start to see something of it soon. So I know that's a lot of info to take in. Those are the updates. And any questions on any of that concerns? Okay. That's great about Mosquito Squad, thank you. Yeah, that's really, it was very exciting to see they sent a really nice letter. We'll run into your director's report. Yes, I agree. Okay. So as you know, we're reopened. As of June 21st, at our new full hours, so we're open for 45 hours of service a week. To state it, we've been busier than we were in the previous 15 months is an understatement. Just this month alone, we've had 735 people come in. That's an account that we do, we need to at some point soon discuss. We've been discussing a little bit right before COVID about getting an automated accounting system, people counter software, and that, you know, got put on a Wayback burner. So we will have to revisit that at some point soon. But for now, we're just doing a manual count, which is what we've been doing for quite a while. And so yeah, so for July, we've had, as of, right before this meeting, we've had 735 come in so far. The takeout window officially closed on July 3rd. We are still hearing from some patrons. In fact, we had a call from one this morning that they're already missed takeout, they don't feel ready to come into the library with their children who are not vaccinated, and, you know, what can we do? And so it's important for me to mention here that as we've put in newsletters, we've put on Facebook, we've told people at the counter, we can still grab bundles for people. So if you, you know, want a few books on a particular topic, or you know you want 12 picture books for your kids, or you want books for yourself, whatever it is that you want, you want movies, magazines, we can compile those together for you into a bundle, and we can check them out to you in advance so that you don't have to stand at the desk while we check them out to you. If you're willing to come in the front door and grab the bag, great. If not, if you call us from the parking lot, we can meet you outside door. So we are willing, more than willing, to work with people to accommodate them still being able to have access to the library. It's just we do not have the staffing levels to keep someone in the room and also have the desk attended for 45 hours. So it worked for a little bit, and then towards the end, we were really stretching ourselves, then trying to cover both, to the point that we ended up just kind of shutting the window and putting the sign in like we had talked about that said, "If you have a schedule, pick up, ring the doorbell, and we'll come to you." So people, when we do tell them that, the person we spoke with this morning, very pleased to know that, took advantage, you know, Sandra quickly put together that for her, and she was here, picked it up, and came in the door, grabbed it, and left. So we're more than willing to help out with that because we do understand that some people might not feel ready to come in. But the window did officially close. We know that we had at least 6,792 people come to the window in that year that it was open. That doesn't include people who just stopped by for a photocopy or to fax something, to print something, pick up tax forms, pick up crafts, like it doesn't count. Sign-in voices. Right, sign-in, yes, sign-in voices. No, it just counts to people who are picking up library checkouts. And we did check out 43,594 items during that time period. So, you know, I think the staff and I are still talking about the fact that who knew that, you know, last June when we opened that window, that the window would become such a part of our service over the next year, and that it would be so successful. Because especially for a library of our size, it was a very successful service. So, you know, here's hoping we don't have to go back to that service at any point. But at least, we do know that if we ever had to, we could do it successfully. So it does work, we can make it work. But we're thrilled to be open. We've gotten so much positive feedback from people over the past few weeks. Once you don't need appointments, we have the expanded hours. Once we closed takeout on July 3rd, we were able to open the side door again, so people can use the side door to come in or out. We'd had that closed because of takeout being back here, but now that that's done, the side door is accessible, people are very happy about that. The fact that, you know, summer reading, which is our busiest time of the year anyway, is sort of happening in conjunction with the new hours. I think, you know, when people come in, it's a very positive visit. So that's been really wonderful. Speaking of summer reading, as of today, we've had 165 kids come in to sign up. That's ages three through 12. And then we have 75 teens and adults who have signed up. So as we usually do, we have a little something for everyone. The kids, ages three to 12, are doing the Read and Beat program again, which has come back. I think this is the fourth summer we've done Read and Beat, and very excited to do Read and Beat. We're still using Beanstack, which we used for the first time last year. The Friends had purchased 100 books that go along with the Beanstack app, so people can use the books with the app, or they can just use the books on their own. They don't have to use the Beanstack app. We've given out all 100 of those already, and those were just going to kids in grades one through eight because it's a journal, so you need to kind of be able to write. So we didn't want to give them to the super little kids, but we decided we didn't want to. We chose not to, we only had 100. But thanks to the Friends for purchasing those. People are coming in to talk about the activities they're completing in their books. They're excited about that. There's a Bruins Bingo game, and people are starting to make Bingo on Bruins Bingo, so they're coming in to claim their stickers for that. I don't know if you all have seen, I think most of you have, we have the mystery sticker challenge going on in both the adult area and in the children's room. And eventually, if you haven't seen them yet, each poster will make a different picture. But basically, it's like a paint-by-number, but instead of paint and numbers, we're using stickers and letters. So it's a grid of letters, and we tell you we're on letter C or letter B, and we give you the stickers, and you put them on, and eventually there will be a photo. And some of the kids who are coming in do that, and some of the adults too, but more so the kids, are so excited, like the parents are telling us, like that's what they've talked about in the car on the way to the library, and what letter we're on, what color sticker they're going to have. Starting next week, we'll have a box in the children's room and in the adult area where people will be able to cast one vote as to what they think the image will eventually be. We'll run that for two weeks, and then at the end, we'll take a look, and whoever is right will be entered to win a prize. So people are looking forward to doing that. So there's definitely a lot happening when you come in or you out. And I think it's all going well. The staff's also having fun with it, so that's good. Storytime resumed outdoors last Wednesday for the first time in over a year. I believe there were 12 kids at Storytime with their families, so we had, it was 20-something people on the lawn, which was really nice. It's a good time for shade on the front lawn, so that's really good. That will go through August 11th. The program was mentioned in the Standard Times article that was published today about free outdoor activities for the summer. So that was nice to see. They did call us, so we knew it was coming. It's still nice to see that it made it in there. It was my new last aim for the first time, so that was exciting, too. The Readers Group and the Cookbook Book Club both met out on the deck last week for the first time, and those were their first meetings since March of 2020, so that was nice to have them come back. And we're going to milk the outdoor programs on the deck for as long as possible. So hopefully, we have a nice mild fall, which allows for us to do that. Also wanted to mention, I was very happy to be invited to participate in the interview process for the Library Media Specialist position at Ford Middle School. Their principal, Mrs. Sylvia, invited me to sit in on those interviews, and I really feel we have a stake in whoever that person is who comes into that position. There have been a couple of paraprofessionals in the six years since I've been here that have worked in the library. This will be the first time that someone is there full-time. Those were part-time positions. And I think that it will really give us an opportunity to collaborate, at least with the middle school through the library. So I was really excited to have that opportunity and appreciated the invite, and I'm looking forward to getting to know whoever is in that position in August. And last but not least, I will mention that I did begin the annual ARIS report. That's the first of the two state reports that happen at this time of year. There's still a lot of data that's not available. We get data from the network, so until that data is available, there's a lot of the report that I can't do. But it's not due until August 27th, so there's certainly plenty of time. And finally, I just wanted to mention a couple of staffing things. We do have a new staff member who started last week in the 12-hour position. That was a nine-and-a-half-hour position, now is a 12-hour position. Her name is Anne. She started last week, and so far, so good. I think she's going to be a good fit with us. But unfortunately, at the same time that position was being filled, we now have a 19-hour vacancy for a tech, too. And obviously, we're not going to talk about it too much today, but at some point soon, we will start already thinking ahead to FY '23 and what we need to do. Since April, we've lost two of our 19-hour positions, two really good employees. And I know that the powers that be always say, "You don't talk about the individual, you talk about the position." But it doesn't change the fact that we've lost two really good employees who have been working for a while, trained really well, and now have taken their skills and talents to a neighboring library where they can have full-time work. And that really is rough for me. And on a personal level, it's hard to lose people that you work really well with and you see are a good part of your team. But also, from a professional standpoint, I feel like, why am I training these people to go get full-time work elsewhere? If they could get full-time work here, wouldn't that be great? And I am, as Jen knows and as our town administrator knows, I am really concerned that our part-time children's room assistant will leave us if she doesn't get full-time work. That position, when it was proposed, I was told, this was back in 2018, and I was told that there was no way it would get approved for full-time. So to go for part-time, at least get it to happen, and then make a case for full-time. If COVID hadn't happened, I would have already made the case for full-time, but that caused a little bit of a delay. But that position should be full-time. Again, and I'm not talking about the individual in this instance. Our children's circulation is higher than any other area of the library. Our children's circulation blows away any other circulation we do. Our children's programming attendance is higher than anything else we do at the library. You know, we're now open the five mornings a week at 10:30, and our Saturdays, it's 9:30. So before mornings on a weekday, you know, the doors open at 10:30, and we've got families standing outside, we didn't come in. There's the first ones in the door, there are the last ones here in the evening. So for whatever reason, this library has, that children's room, has really taken off. And I worried that, you know, coming after COVID, it wouldn't come back. It's coming back with a vengeance. People are so happy to come in, to browse, to pick their own books, and the adult collection also, but really in the children's collection. So there are so many reasons why that position needs to be made full-time. But then, when you get into the personal part of it, we have a staff member who's been with us for five years, who now has her master's in library science, which she's earned while she's worked here, and can easily go somewhere else for full-time work if we don't do something to make that a full-time position. And I cannot afford to lose that person in that position. We have to do something. She's also, I mean, she's developed a tremendous relationship with her community, and so much of children's librarianship is about developing relationships with the people who use your library. And so I'm going to bring this up at every meeting for this fiscal year. You're going to get tired of hearing me talk about this, but I just have to, we need, there's only two full-time, we are a staff of 10, two full-timers. It's like, doesn't even make sense. So it needs to shift, and it needs to start with the children's librarian so that we don't lose someone else who now is going to, you know, drive five or 10 minutes away from there for full-time work. It just seems so silly when we get down to it. And, you know, the last person to leave, I mean, it's not a secret, Cynthia Susa, worked for this library for nine and a half years and is a Kushner resident, and now has to drive 15 minutes to go to work every day for full-time work. It shouldn't be like that. So this will be, this will be a hot topic this fiscal year.
She's worked here for nine years?
She was here for nine and a half years. She started in, what year are we in, 2021. January would be her 10-year anniversary. So she was at the, she started as a page over at the Russell Library. And then when I came in, she mentioned that she was looking for more hours, and that 19-hour position happened to open soon after that. So she was promoted from her 12-hour page position to the 19-hour tech position in 2016. And, you know, has been a really good employee to this library and to this town. And all of our patrons know her because she's been here the entire time we've been in this building. So that's a rough loss to see her go. And, you know, as a resident, boy, wouldn't that have been nice to give her full-time work in a town where she has lived for a long time, but now has to go elsewhere? And I just, we got to turn that around so that, you know, we can not let things like that happen. So at least starting with the children's position. I mean, I've had three town administrators tell me it's not going to happen, but we're going to, we need to make it happen. So I think we have a strong case with the children's librarian, and that's a strong start, and then we'll see what happens once we make that happen. But that's my, I hate to already be thinking about the next fiscal year when it's only 13 days into FY '22, but I can't help it, so.
How many employees do we have in one?
10. Well, we have the vacant position, so we have nine, but we have 10 positions. And hopefully, I will post that. The vacant position has been posted in-house, but it hasn't been posted publicly yet because we're doing all we can to just keep our...
And you can't take that 12 hours and give it to somebody who's got 19?
So the problem with doing that, that's an interesting proposal, but the problem with doing that is if we take those hours and combine it into another position, then we've lost that position. And the children's position shouldn't be a tech at the desk, like doing the desk work. That's, to make that position be truly what it is, or what it should be, they shouldn't be on desk at all. Maybe occasionally, and I'm on desk more than occasionally recently, but Sandra and I typically shouldn't be on the desk all the time. We should have the techs do that, and then we fill in for lunch breaks or as needed, you know, an hour or two here or there. But if I take that vacant part-time, if they were willing to roll those hours into an existing position, I then lost that position, the part-time tech position. So then who's covering those hours at the desk? So on the one hand, it sounds like a great idea, but then on the other hand, it doesn't make any of our, doesn't free up any of our positions to do what we're actually hired to do.
So you want one of those 10 positions?
I want one of those 10 positions to be full-time. So that I want the 19-hour to bump to 35 hours. So I want the 19-hour tech-free position to become a 35-hour position, which is 16 additional hours. And I don't think the hours are the catch. The catch is benefits. So, because the town would have to pay benefits, and that's what the catch is. I don't think the catch is the hours, because benefits means. So, but, yeah.
In order to run?
In order to, right. I mean, we're not the library that we were in 2015 when we were, you know, in Russell. And we've gotten great support from, anytime we've asked the Finance Committee for anything, anything, they've supported us. So I'm going to be confident that when we ask the Finance Committee for this, they're going to support this. I mean, they supported getting the children's position as a part-time position when we asked for that for 2018, and they supported that. So I'm going to hope that they support it. You know, in that meeting, we talked about, we can start this at full-time. but most likely, we'll be coming back and asking you for this to become a full-time position at some point.
Well, the town gave us a bigger library, so you would think that they would give us.
We need the staffing levels to.
Another full-time position?
Yep, so it, I think goes in line, you know, and, and can we keep doing it the way that we're doing it now? Yeah, sure, we could, but why would you want to? When you, then, that person, especially now with the fact.
Because of the turnovers?
Right, right.
That would be the reason they made.
Right, like, let's not, let's not keep, the turnovers are a huge deal. Then also, now I mentioned, there's a full-time librarian, media specialist, coming forward. So wouldn't it be great if we had a full-time children's librarian here who could collaborate versus your director collaborating, you know, with the media specialist? Like, your children's librarian would do those collaborations and build up a great relationship between the school and the library. So there, there's many reasons to defend, but yes, the turnovers, I think, is what has lit my fire about making this happen. Because, you know, this is a great place to work, but if people leave because they can't have full-time work, then it's not great for them. I mean, their circumstances were different when they joined the staff, too. Part-time work was okay for them at that point. But life changes, and sometimes you need a little bit more, you know? And then that's, you know, that's, you're ready, for whatever reasons in your life, you're, you know, full-time work is the better option for you, and that's what's happened here. And I, I know it will happen with the children's room assistant if we don't do something. And then it would just happen with the next person. Oh, okay, well, let that, if we're talking about the individual, okay, we'll let that individual move on and fill it with somebody else. Why? So two years later, that person's established, and then they leave? Like, that's gotta stop, you know, at some point.
Well, it is so much work, it should be a full-time position, I believe.
Right, because there's so much that.
It's a lot, a lot.
It's a lot, and there's so much that can't be done because it's only 19 hours a week. The 19 hours a week is not a lot of time, especially for a building that's open 45 hours a week. So 19 hours really isn't cutting it. So we're great, it's great that the team here supports that position as much as they can within the confines of what their job descriptions are, but they, they do support it. I support it, you know, still Sandra does work that could be done by that person. Like, that's, but wouldn't it be great if you just didn't need to ask other people to do that? Like, in the level that we have to ask right now. So there are, there are a lot of reasons to make that happen. And I really think that now is the time, now is the time to do it. But I think I'm fired up about it, like I said, because of the two recent, recent losses.
And the question that you're gonna make that decision, who do we, do we talk about?
Well, no, it'll, it'll get talked about with town administrator Julie Hebert, it will get talked. And, you know, I hope she will, she knows how I feel, and she know, she's heard me talk about this quite a bit in the last few weeks. She would bring it to the board of selectmen, we would bring it to the finance committee. And if the finance committee supported it, and the board of selectmen supported it, then it would become part of our budget for next year's town meeting. So I think that might involve the board of trustees at some point, giving a presentation along with me to the board of selectmen. Not, so normally, we present the budget to the finance committee. But it may present, you know, be an opportunity, or we may be asked to give a presentation to the board of selectmen also explaining why this is important for our library. Which is why I'm laying it out to you now at this stage. Because I told Jen, if we wait till the fall, and then I say, oh, yeah, by the way, like, you know, I want you to know now that this is something we've gotta keep our eyes on for, you know, going, going forward. So then, when we do get to the budget discussions in the fall, it's not a, she's never said she needs a full-time employee, where is this coming from? So I, I wanna rally you all and get you fired up, too, so that.
We're fired up.
All right. Yay!
Go fill the town hall first.
Yeah, right, yeah, you could start going now, right?
Well, start with the finance committee.
We don't have to wait till, we don't have to wait till FY '23, right? Absolutely. But thanks for asking about merging the positions, because that is something that's been thought about. But it would be, it's a Band-Aid, it would, it would allow us to get what we want, and then we would be short. And then that, you know, the children's, like, why would that be covered in the desk?
Yeah, because you wanna put that, those hours all into the children's room.
Exactly, yeah. Anyway, last but not least, I said that was my last piece, but it's kind of a little, it's not. I just wanted to quickly mention statistics, because you also have the June 2021 summary for statistics. And I wanted to point out that, of course, you see the June 2020 and the June 2021, which, wow, amazing! They went from circulating 1,300 items to 5,500 items, they're incredible. Clearly, we were just launching the takeout program in, in June, and, you know, had only been doing it for a couple of weeks. So the circulation is quite low for June of 2020. June of 2021 is a different story. We've been, we were open the entire month of June, plus went to the full hours on June 21st. And I think, great, well, this is really good. So I did look back at old statistics, just out of curiosity, to see where we measure up. And June of 2019, we circulated 8,400 items. So I was like, oh, man, that's, that's way low compared to June of 2019. But then, when I went back to June of 2018, 17, 16, 15, we're kind of right in line with where we were circulating in those years. We did, for some reason, see a real giant increase in late 2018 and then into 2019. We're still not sure why exactly that happened. I will say that children's position came to be in October of 2018, so that certainly may have helped. And that might be why, so that by the next summer, we had really grown that program because we were able to do a lot more. So that could be why. But you'll see, in 2018, it was 4,900, 2017, 5,000, 2016, 5,300, and back at Russell, 3,900. So we're really doing, I think, about what we would normally do at this time. So I'm super excited to see what July and August brings, those are always our busiest months. And I'm, you know, really excited to see how circulation grows for those two months. And I think, you know, knock on wood, I think we're gonna get right back to where we were pre-COVID in terms of library usage, which is really exciting for me to see because it was very worrisome that people were gonna forget about coming to the library, or, you know, not use us in the same way anymore. And I think we're, we're definitely seeing that, so far, it looks like we're, we're, we're getting right back in here where we were. So that's exciting. So I told Jen, yeah, I don't know if we even need to do the July meeting, maybe we just wait to lock a seat, and then.
Here we go.
Forty minutes later.
Glad I talked you into it.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
See, the eBooks went down.
They did go down.
And that surprises me because the people I know that studied eBooks during COVID, they're still doing it.
They're still doing it.
They're not coming back from eBooks, which I would have thought, I never left, so.
Right.
I'm surprised that that, I don't know.
So it is surprising, except that I think that there are a chunk of people who are coming back in now.
Right, right.
So I think, and we were already starting to see a small decline in eBook usage.
I'm not big, you know that.
Right.
But the people I know that are doing it, they're still, so it's.
And we are hearing that from people. They are saying, oh, well, now that I've, I've gotten good at it, or I've gotten used to it, and I can immediately get what I want, it's 2:00 AM, there's the book that I want. And the ease of use is there. So I think for sure, we will, we will see the numbers. I mean, I didn't include it in any of this, but if you look back at eBook circulation from pre-COVID, if you look at 2019, we're around like between 200 and 300 for eBooks, not including the audio or anything else, but for eBooks. So even at 435, we're still way above what we were before then. So I think.
Funny compared to what I have here.
Right, right. But it'll be interesting, that'll be another, interesting to see how July, August plays out for eBooks, too. But I, I think a piece of it at least is because we're, so many people are now coming back in, who are, I mean, and we're hearing a mix. We're hearing, oh, well, I discovered that, and I'm good at it, and I like it now, so I'm just gonna come here for my magazines, or my, though they can do those electronically, too, or come get some DVDs. But we also have people coming in saying, oh, I hate reading on my Kindle, thank God you're open, like, you know, that kind of thing. So it'll be interesting, that's a really good point, it'll be interesting to see how it plays out. But I do think it will at least stay higher than it was, because there's certainly, that opened up a whole new thing for people. And our hoopla circulation, which stays separate, that's definitely above what it was still from pre-COVID. Did I come in?
Anybody else have anything? Questions coming?
I think now, cover everything.
I think she did, I know, right? Do you wanna set the next meeting?
I, I wrote down a couple of dates, and hopefully, one of these sticks. My first option is Tuesday, August 17th at 4:00, if that's a possibility. And if not.
That's okay for me.
That would work for everyone else?
I think that does work, yeah.
Tuesday, August 17th.
Yep.
At 4:00.
Of course, I was looking at paper calendars, and I was making sure that was. Yes, it is, okay.
Okay, next meeting, Tuesday, August 17th at 4:00.
Great.
Okay. We're all set?
Thanks, everyone.
We just need a motion?
I have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
All in favor? This July 13th, 2021, meeting of the Akushan Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is for 42. Thank you.